All right, we're gonna get started. Thank you all for coming out to the August 12th meeting of the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you could join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's so nice to see such a packed room. Item number three, we have a couple announcements. National Night Out, take two, we're gonna try again. We have rescheduled National Night Out to Tuesday, August 20th from 6:00 to 9:00 at the William F. Mall Park at Wendell Stray. We hope you will be able to come out and celebrate police and community partnerships. It's a great event every year, so please try to come out. Also, we have an August blood drive. We're hosting our summer blood drive on Wednesday, August 28th from 1:00 to 6:00 at the Community and Rec Center. Summer is critical for the blood supply. Please consider donating by signing up online or contacting the township for more info. Item number four is public comment. Persons wishing to make public comment during this meeting on any items not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. If there's any public comment, please come up and state your name and address. One up.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I'm Stephanie Gaylord. This is my husband Otto Gaylord. We're 109 Kelsey Drive. We wanted to make a comment about a recent zoning board decision for 108 Cathedral Drive. 108 Cathedral Drive proposed variances to the code for addition five times the size of the coding variance. The variance in the code was also for an addition, that's three floors. The code says one floor. We have concerns about this zoning board decision, and we're just not clear what the next steps forward are in terms of the Board of Supervisors, in terms of the recommendation, if there's been a recommendation yet, because the minutes aren't posted online. The 108 Cathedral Drive neighbors are great people. There's nothing against them, but the issue is that this is gonna be really not an addition, but two structures, two, almost two separate structures if you see the architectural plans. It's gonna be 3,400 square feet of an addition. The variance says allows 700 square feet. We're just asking the Board to consider the number of emails sent by Kelsey Drive regarding this addition, because it's much larger and will be the largest in the township. We abut to the property, so we would look back at this property. The reason we bought our house is because of the space behind the house, and we really love the property. And that's why we purchased our home in Montgomery Township, and that's being changed by this. We're also concerned, because what happens when 108 Cathedral Drive residents go to sell the property? Anyone that purchases this property could actually separate it into a multifamily structure. We're in a residential neighborhood, not an apartment situation, right? And that's what'll eventually happen here, could potentially happen. And so, we just wanna raise that concern and for you to consider the email sent, and we appreciate the Board's, you know, responses to our emails, and also, we appreciate, you know, your service too. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. We understand the situation, and there are some ongoing conversations.
Harris Pfizer, 111 Kelsey Drive, next door neighbors. So, I wanna support the Gaylords and their comments, but I also wanna get some clarifications. Am I allowed to ask questions, or is it just make a comment?
I think you can ask a question if Solicitor has the answer.
In Carolyn McQuerry's email response back to me in this subject, she indicated that the Board would be Supervisors Board, we'd be making some decisions going forward. What decisions, rights do you have in this particular context?
You speak to our rights, please.
Yes, the Board of Supervisors actually sent the Solicitor's Office, myself, to oppose this application. So, I was there that night, and we opposed the application and asked that it not be built because of the size concerns. As a result of that, the township has standing in this matter to file an appeal if the township wants to file an appeal of the zoning hearing board's decision. Now, in order to do that, the zoning hearing board has to come out with a written decision that we can look at, review, see if their findings are legitimate, and make that determination. That decision has not been released yet, but we would have 30 days from the date of that decision in order to make that determination.
So, from a process standpoint, you have no direct chain of command. You had to go through a court of appeals-
Correct.
-to fight the decision that's made by the zoning-
Correct. The Board of Supervisors is not a, you know, a final veto over the zoning hearing board. They act independently. And that's the way it is under the municipality's planning code in all Pennsylvania. It has to be that way.
I understood. I understand that. I find that amazing, that we have appointed positions, not just in this township, but across the state, that aren't held accountable to anything except for going through a court of appeals process. As, you know, we elect supervisors, we don't elect, but we appoint zoning board people. I think that's something I'm gonna take away from this particular situation. The other thing I would like to bring forward, and first off, let me say, I support the Board in filing an appeal, and would ask an appeal to be made through the courts. Secondly, given the fact that, as the Gaylords mentioned, the variance was 700 square, you know, over five times, almost five times the number of square feet in the code, two times the number of entrances connected between an existing house and the new addition, and three floors instead of one. That, to me, is significant difference in what the code is, and I would ask the Board to consider removing two individuals that voted in favor of this through a misfeasance process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Okay, we're gonna move on. Item number five, announcement of executive session.
Madam Chair, yes, the Board of Supervisors met an executive session earlier this evening at 6:30 p.m. to discuss three matters of active litigation topics, discuss the legitimate subjects of an executive session under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law.
Thank you. Item number six is our consent agenda. I'm gonna move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following. Minutes of the July 8th, 2024 Board Meeting, ratification of payment of bills for July 19th, 2024, payment of bills for August 12th, 2024, escrow release number five for Beer and Wine Mill Realty LP, escrow lease number three and start of maintenance period for the Love Car Wash, escrow release number 10 for Weststrom Development, escrow release number one for Baratia Learning Center. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Now, the part that we've all been waiting for, the swearing in of new police officers. Chief Bendig.
Good evening. On January 29th, 2024, recruit hiring process was initiated to fill vacancies within the Police Department's Patrol Division. Thirty-one applicants completed for the position of recruit police officer in this hiring process. On March 17th of this year, a second recruit hiring process was initiated to fill vacancies within the Department's Patrol Division. Twenty-three applicants competed for the position of recruit police officer in this hiring process. These police department hiring processes include a written examination or a resume review, a physical agility test, two police oral review boards, and a background investigation, which consists of a polygraph examination, neighborhood interviews, and employer interviews. The two top candidates from each hiring process, Mason Strauss and Louis Ritchie, are before the Board this evening for consideration for appointment to the position of recruit police officer. Mason is from Downingtown, Pennsylvania, is a graduate of Downingtown West High School. He worked in the construction industry before completing his ACT 120 certification from the Delaware County Police Academy this past June. Louis, he goes by Ray, and I'm gonna mess this up at least once, okay? Ray Ritchie is from Telford, PA, and graduated from Sodern Area High School. He attended Gwinnett Mercer College and received his bachelor's degree in sci, bachelor's of science degree in criminal justice. This past June, he completed his ACT 120 certification from the Montgomery County Police Academy. It is recommended that the Mason and Louis be sworn in as police officers this evening. Once you do the resolution, I guess we can do the formal swearing in?
We'll do the resolution. Does anyone have any comments? I'll just say, we're happy to welcome you. We love our police department and excited for you to be with such a great, great group of people in that department. Gonna move to appoint Mason Strauss and Louis Ritchie as recruit police officers in the Montgomery Township Police Department effective August 13th, 2024. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Here's some swearing in. I'm gonna try to make this easy on you. You can see this as we're going, okay? I, Mason Strauss.
I, Mason Strauss.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support-
That I will support.
Obey and defend-
Obey and defend.
The Constitution-
The Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will enforce the laws-
And that I will enforce the laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And that I will discharge-
And that I will discharge.
The duties of police officer-
The duties of police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear-
I do further swear.
That I will support-
That I will support.
Obey and defend-
Obey and defend.
The Constitution-
The Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of this Commonwealth.
Of this Commonwealth.
And that I will enforce the laws-
And that I will enforce the laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And that I will discharge-
And that I will discharge.
The duties of police officer-
The duties of police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And that I will discharge-
And that I will discharge.
The duties of police officer-
The duties of police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Okay. Oops. All right. I do further swear-
I do further swear.
That I will uphold-
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce-
Obey and enforce.
The law without consideration-
The law without consideration.
To a person's race-
To a person's race.
Color-
Color.
Sex-
Sex.
Religious creed-
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation-
Sexual orientation.
Age-
Age.
National origin-
National origin.
Ancestry-
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
Nice work. All right, going to sign. Go over there and sign. Make it official now. Thank you so much.
Let's go to the front of those fans. Appreciate it. Right here. We're gonna have to write the center here. We're at three, two, one. All right, thank you. Do you need to have a picture? Don't be back. We're gonna leave her. Thank you.
All right, you ready? Hand on the Bible. You good, Dad?
I'm good.
All right. I, Louis Ritchie.
I, Louis Ritchie.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support-
That I will support.
Obey and defend-
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will enforce the laws-
And that I will enforce the laws.
Of the Commonwealth.
Of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And that I will discharge-
And that I will discharge.
The duties of police officer-
The duties of police officer.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
I do further swear-
I do further swear.
That I will uphold-
That I will uphold.
Obey-
Obey.
And enforce the law-
And enforce the law.
Without consideration-
Without consideration.
To a person's race-
To a person's race.
Color-
Color.
Sex-
Sex.
Religious creed-
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation-
Sexual orientation.
Age-
Age.
National origin-
National origin.
Ancestry-
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
There you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Three, two, one. I'll be in back.
You're good, man. You got it. Down the mountain, King. You need to stay for the rest of the day. We don't have to stay.
I'll see you out there. Yes, ma'am. I will.
Just wait till everybody goes out, and we can have quiet again. It's a little scary. We'll just need one. Thank you.
I do, John.
He's got a big box there. All right, so number eight, review of proposed text amendment for 1008 Upper State Road. Mary Ann McConnell, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Dunleavy owns two adjacent parcels located at the corner of Horsham and Upper State Road, known as 1008 Upper State Road. In 2008, these properties, along with several other adjoining properties along Horsham Road, were rezoned from residential to BP, Business Professional, with the corresponding zoning text amendment creating Section 230-83K Special Regulations, where a BP property abuts a residential zoning district. Mr. Mark Kaplan is here tonight as the Dunlevis attorney to represent the Dunlevis and explain their proposed text amendment to this ordinance for their project.
Thank you. Dunlevis have owned this property for a long time. They were involved in having the zoning change to BP. I think it goes back to 2008. The property and going east from Upper State Road is zone BP. You go across the street, it's LI. In the existing district, and I think it's in the first document, is the petition that we filed, and we're limited to 5,000 square feet of office space. And in the simplest, in the simplest of terms, it's not worked. There's a long list in this petition of privileged firms that the Dunlevis have employed. There have been multiple potential buyers. When I first got involved, Bruce Shute was still here. I talked to Bruce. He had spoken to any number of these people, and they couldn't make it work. They couldn't make a 5,000-square-foot building economically work with the improvements that are needed and the amount of space that would be generated. So, we initially, I filed a petition to go to the zoning hearing board for variances, and your staff, Caroline, Mary Ann, said, wait a minute, why don't you just come in and talk first to the staff? It's a new day here in Montgomery Township. And I came in, and I was sort of blown away. You had seven or eight township officials, the police, the engineers, everybody, and they were very, very helpful, listened to us about what the issues were, I guess, traffic coming in off of Upper State Road. And it was suggested that we ask for, not a zoning change, but an amendment to the text. And I prepared such a, an amendment, and it is, I think it's Exhibit, it's the end of my petition. Let me find it. Yeah, it's Exhibit B at the end of the petition. And it's really pretty simple. It says that in the BP district, where these special conditions apply, instead of having a maximum of a 5,000-square-foot building, you can have a maximum of a 10,000-square-foot building. We have two lots, one next to each other. Theoretically, you could put a 5,000-square-foot building on each one of them, but because they're separate lots, then you have side yards between them, and two 5,000-square-foot office buildings has not worked in the market. So, while we theoretically could get 10,000 square feet here, you can't get it in a configuration that will, will work. So, you might wanna look at the second, I think it's the second page of my petition. There's a Google map. I mean, it's right down the street. I'm sure everybody is very familiar with it, but to put it in context, we put the Google map, and you can see, we've drawn lines, red lines around it, so that you can see where it is. I guess that's the northeast corner, the intersection of Horsham Road and Upper State Road. So, let me let you absorb some of that, and then I have more material that I'd like to show you, but I know I've thrown a whole lot of stuff, and if you wanna take a minute or two to go through this, and then I'll show you what we think. Yeah, Chair Lady has got what I was gonna get to.
Can you tell us what the plans for this clinic would be?
Yeah. So, in, with our petition, the end of our petition, Exhibit C, is an aerial photograph with one layout of a building. You see that? It's a fold-out at the end of the petition.
Well, there's two different options, I guess. One with a parking lot.
Yeah, I was gonna get to that. Yeah. We did this first alternative with the building up front before we had some developer input. We got some developer input, and they, the second alternative, we think makes more sense from a development point of view, moving people around, but it's, this is what we would expect to develop there. And then, we've had enough developer interest that one of them had their architect prepare these couple of perspectives of what it would probably look like. That's obviously, you're looking from Upper State Road. We think that there is a demand for some kind of standalone medical facility, and that's, that's really it. Now, I have Jim Dietrich here, who's been our realtor, and if you thought that it was worthwhile to hear all, I'll call it the horror stories of how many people we've gone through trying to get somebody to buy it and develop it, you could hear that. I suspect you don't want, you got plenty to do tonight, but it's, it, it, it's listed in one of the footnotes that just goes on and on. So, we're here asking that you start the process of the possibility of a text amendment. However you would do that, I assume it would be referenced to a referral to the Planning Commission and maybe the County Planning Commission, if you're so inclined to help the Dunlevis turn this into an income-producing property that looks like it's a use that would serve the community.
So, Mr. Kaplan, it would start with a formal application?
For me?
It would start with a formal application by the, by the property owner-
I, Mary-
As a text amendment.
That's what I thought I filed, the, right here.
Well, no, the appropriate fees or escrow-
Oh.
Was not submitted. It initially started with a sketch plan, which we had suggested your op, your options were either zoning hearing board or text amendment, and then you would proceed from there.
And that's, we, we have here a petition for zoning text amendment in the materials I've sent you. We can just file that, and we can-
Yeah, we were at the understanding, you just wanted to get an idea how the Board would feel about it before you filed any formal application.
Exactly.
So, I have a question. Does your proposed medical clinic, are they aware that Penn Medicine is building a huge facility literally right down the road? I would hate for you to go through all this, and they change their mind based on finding that out.
The developers that we've talked to know all about the Penn facility.
Okay.
There are so many different variations on medical theme and building today that, yes, they know about that.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, which one is our-
So, you're just kinda testing the water, right?
Yeah.
You know, to see, you know, how we feel about, you know, the use, this particular use in this location?
Well, it's more the size. The use is permitted. It's the size of the building that is not permitted. We're not asking, we're not asking for a zoning change in use. There are a wide variety of things that are permitted in the PB. We think from, from the interest that we've been getting from the development community, there's a high likelihood that this is a clinic building, that something for in the medical field.
And so, these are the two examples of what it could possibly look at, look like, 10,000 or the 9700?
It's 90.
97, 75.
Yeah, when we started to lay it out, we can only get the 9700.
Okay.
Mr. Kaplan, there, I mean, you're proposing a medical use, but ultimately, it may not be a medical use though, right? I mean, you're not gonna coven the property for that, for that.
John, absolutely. Absolutely. We, we have had very serious interest from developers for these standalone medical facilities, but I can't guarantee it. But the only change, I know I'm repeating myself, the only change we're asking for is an essence, take two little boxes that were next to each other and combine them when you, when you cut through everything. That's really what it is.
Has anyone talked to any of the neighbors to see if they would be in opposition? I mean, that'll come eventually anyway, but-
They, our neighbors are all zoned the same way. I don't know. And that's, we, we have here a petition for zoning text amendment in the materials I've sent you. We can just file that and we can.
Yeah, we were at the understanding, you just wanted to get an idea how the board would feel about it before you filed any formal application.
So I have a question. Does your proposed medical clinic, are they aware that Penn Medicine is building a huge facility literally right down the road? I would hate for you to go through all this and, and they change their mind based on finding that out.
The, the developers that we've talked to know all about the Penn facility.
Okay.
There are so many different variations on medical theme and building today that, yes, they, they know about that.
Okay. Any other questions?
So which one is our?
So you're just kind of testing the water, right? Uh, you know, to, to see, you know, how we feel about, you know, the use, uh, this particular use in this location?
Well, it's more the size. The use is permitted. It's the size of the building that is not permitted. We're not asking, we're not asking for a zoning change in use. There are a wide variety of things that are permitted in the PB. We think from, um, from the interest that we've been getting from the development community, there's a high likelihood that this is a clinic building that, something for in the medical field.
And so these are the two examples of what it could possibly look at, look like 10,000 or the 9700.
It's 90.
9775.
Yeah, when we started to lay it out, we can only get the 9700.
Okay. Mr. Kaplan, there, I mean, you're proposing a medical use, but ultimately it may not be a medical use though, right? I mean, you're not going to coven the property for that, for that.
John, absolutely, absolutely. Um, we, we have had very serious interest from developers for these standalone medical facilities, but I can't guarantee it. But the only change, I know I'm repeating myself. Uh, the only change we're asking for is, and asking us to take two little boxes that were next to each other and combine when you, when you cut through everything. That's really what it is.
Has anyone talked to any of the neighbors to see if they would be in opposition? I mean, that'll come eventually anyway, but.
They, our neighbors are all zoned the same way. I don't know. Um, yeah, all, all the properties along Porsham Road is on BP.
Behind them is residential.
That's what I meant. This, you know, applied to.
This would apply to all of BP's. 23083K was established that anything abutting, any BP abutting residential, these regulations would apply. All BP districts abut residential except one, and that's where the community center sits. So all the other BP districts do abut residential.
But they don't all have the 60,000 square foot.
No. So when we review the proposed text amendment, we'll keep in mind how it affects all of the other districts as well, all those parcels. And we'll keep that in mind when we make our recommendations for, before it gets to you and it goes to the county.
Right. So I was just wondering if there, do we, can we quantify how much space is that? And are, are all of those properties already developed? Are, are any of them vacant like this?
Most of them are developed. Actually, I take that back. There are two parcels that do not abut residential. There's one, there's a sketch plan submitted for that does not abut residential.
Okay. So the likelihood of us seeing more applications now for this type of development that abuts residential as a result of passing this text amendment, how likely is that, would you say?
Would only be through redevelopment. Most, most of these parcels are already developed.
They're already developed. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we would just be approving to allow this? It's still.
You're not approving anything.
We're not, right.
Essentially, they're saying, hey, should we waste our time or should we move forward with this?
Right.
So if you wanted residents to come out, if you wanted to get more of those details, you would be in a position to consider that and get the planning commissions of the county and the township's feedback prior to actually voting on whether you're going to amend the ordinance to provide for this at this time. This is just the informal, you know, it's not wasted, you know, it's not a wasted time to try to move this.
Right. Would we entertain doing, you know, looking at this further?
And mind you, they would still have to comply with building coverage, impervious coverage, setbacks, parking, all those other provisions. He's just asking for the.
Stormwater, all the rest of the, uh, SADO requirements.
It seems like this is pretty unique. This isn't, you know, something that's going to have like a huge ripple effect if we were to approve, you know, a text amendment of this nature.
It, it's a 10,000 square foot building on a minimum 60,000 acre lot. So, I mean, if, if you had a large property, you still have a small building, and you have to have at least 60,000. So if someone did want to consolidate properties and tear down multiple buildings on those lots, you're going to have a pretty large lot for where that building would be.
But you're still only going to have 10,000 squares.
You're still going to have 10, and it would still be fronting, I guess, uh, Porsham Road, right?
What we found, I was a little surprised when we have, um, two acres. I expected the 10,000 square feet to be a no-brainer. When we started to lay it out, the side yards, setbacks, all of that, we couldn't quite get there. We got to about 9,700. So it, it's still, it's, it, it's still pretty conservative development.
We still have some hoops to jump through, but I think the board, we would not be opposed to it.
Thank you. It's all we really wanted to hear.
Get that sign down out of my township, would you?
Mr. Kaplan, you're going to do a formal application of what you have here submitted?
We'll, we'll, we'll package that, get the fees, and we'll get it to, I guess we'll get it to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
And I got to tell you, you've got a great staff here.
We know.
You've got a great staff here. I've done a lot of work for a lot, a lot of years. And I am just so pleasantly surprised with the reception, and I just think you ought to know that.
Thank you for that. We know how wonderful they are. It's nice to hear, though. All right. All right, I'm going to take a pause here and like ask the Boy Scouts what we're trying to learn about tonight. Someone come up and talk to us. Come on, you're going to get a badge or something for this.
I was going to say the same thing.
I tried to get them to come sit up here in our empty seats, and they, they did not want that. They declined my kind offer.
Hello, my name is Josh Klein. I'm a Boy Scout in Troop 547. We're at MMR, uh, Mary Mother's Demer in Montgomery County.
Township.
What, yeah. Well, I don't, I don't live here, so. Uh, we were supposed to, we're, well, we're, we're coming here tonight for our communications merit badge. And you're supposed to have a lot of people here, but they didn't show up.
So you communicate then. Look, look at us. Don't look at them. Speak to us for a minute. Communicate.
So we're just here to observe the communication that is going on.
What, what have you observed about us tonight?
Well, one thing I noticed was the microphones, right? Cause, um, it's a big room and there's a lot of people, so the microphones definitely help everyone like hear each other.
Any recommendations for us that we could do better?
Not really.
Well, thanks for communicating. You come communicate for a minute. Just tell us your name, please.
Hi, I'm Sam Klein, and I have to do this.
Are you brothers?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You have to do this.
Yes.
Give us a little communication and we'll give you a checkmark.
Um, I definitely think the microphones help.
You gotta get a new topic. What else have you observed tonight?
Not much.
How about the two new police officers that we swore in? Were you here for that?
Yes.
What'd you think of that?
Um, I thought that definitely helped because, um, there could, like, there's a lot more crime.
We're going to hope to not have a lot more crime, so thank you for that observation. I'll let you sit. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate it. We'll go back to our meeting now. Number nine, authorization to advertise amendments to Chapter 189 Shade Trees. Mary Ann McConnell, Planning and Zoning.
The staff is requesting the authorization to advertise for proposed amendments to the Township Code, Chapter 189 Shade Trees. Uh, the proposed amendments include updating definitions, adding provisions for permitting for the removal and replacement of residential street trees, and updating shade tree protection, replacement, and pruning provisions. Uh, staff, the Shade Tree Commission, and township consultants have had the opportunity to review the details of the proposed amendments to Chapter 189. And at this time, we recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the advertisement to amend these proposed, proposed chapter of 189 as presented.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, I'll just add, though, that, uh, I have to commend staff and our professionals and our Shade Tree Commission members who spent a lot of time really delving into this, and Mary Ann McConnell in particular, for her work researching policies and, um, the code in neighboring communities uh, for reference and, and how they're managing this process. And, um, and I just want to, you know, give them the kudos and the respect for all their hard work on this. I mean, it really was, uh, something that we started last year. Um, it's been several months of, of research and then proposed changes and edits, uh, multiple rounds of edits to make sure that we really got this right.
Appreciate all the hard work. All right, I'm going to move to authorize staff to advertise the proposed amendments to Chapter 189 of the Code of Montgomery Township as presented. Second. Can you public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Consider amending appointments for Planning Commission. Mary Ann McConnell.
So the Planning Commission currently has seven members and two alternates appointed by the Board of Supervisors. Tom Borghetti has served on the Planning Commission since July of 2019. He was previously appointed as an alternate and would like to be, um, updated and appointed as a member. In order to maintain the numbers of members and alternates, Ratuki Patel has volunteered to have his appointment modified to the alternate role.
Anybody have any questions? Tom's been a great member, so I like, like to see that. I'm going to move to appoint Tom Borghetti as a member of the Planning Commission with a term to expire January 2025, and appointing Ratuki Patel as an alternate member of the Planning Commission with a term to expire January 2026. Second. All, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Consider adoption of Ordinance 24-343, authorizing the enforcement of traffic control signals using automated red light enforcement. Jay Scott Bendig, Chief of Police.
Yes, good evening. On July 11th, uh, staff requested authorization to advertise for an amendment to the Township Code, uh, regarding automatic red light enforcement. Last year, members of the Department's Highway Safety Unit conducted a comprehensive evaluation of traffic crashes within the township to identify how best to reduce crashes and ensure the safety of the motoring public and pedestrians within our community. High accident locations were identified, strategies were implemented to reduce these crashes, including educational initiatives, discussions with transit, sa, traffic safety professionals and traffic enforcement. On February 26th of this year, members of the Department's Highway Safety Unit conducted a presentation to the board requesting input regarding the implementation of the Automatic Red Light Enforcement Camera Program to be utilized at intersections that continue to trend with high crash occurrences despite our efforts. This evening, after discussion and review with our township solicitor, staff is presenting the proposed ordinance for adoption, amending the Township Code to reflect the above recommendation. Uh, the board previously authorized the advertisement of this proposed ordinance at the public meeting on July 11th.
What do you Klein brothers think of red light cameras? Do you like it? Absolutely.
Yes, yes, that's where it's going.
Anybody have any questions? I think it is very much needed. I'm going to move to adopt Ordinance Number 24-343, amending the Township Code Part Two, General Legislation, Chapter 222, Vehicles and Traffic, Adding Article Nine, Automated Red Light Enforcement. Second. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, number 12, approval of capital purchase mobile data, mobile, mobile data computers. Jay Scott Bendig, Chief of Police.
Yes, mobile data computers, herein referred to as MDCs, are installed in each of the police vehicles utilized for patrol activities. These MDCs act as patrol officers linked to several information services, including our CAD system, our countywide records management system, PennDOT driver and vehicle information, the court system, and other law enforcement applications. These MDCs are also utilized to run our thermal imaging cameras and our in-car camera systems in the vehicles. Existing MDCs were installed in 2009 and have reached the end of life. These MDCs are performing at a slower level due to the number of applications being utilized, combined with the inability to expand the memory and operating systems. The department is proposing a replacement of these MDCs while maintaining the original docking stations that are operational and compatible with the new equipment. Attaches a quote dated August 7th, 2024 from Patrol PC and authorized vendor of the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program to provide the MDCs at a total cost of $61,967.38. Um, a total of $62,000 is included in the 2024 approved final budget for the purchase of these replacement MDCs.
And this covers all of the cars that we need them in?
Yes, ma'am, all of the marked police vehicles that are used on patrol.
Anyone have any questions?
Nice to see that it came in, um, just barely under budget, but under budget.
What do you Klein boys think of $62,000 for these police car modifications? Should we do it? I think we're going to do it.
It'll improve communications.
Communications. I'm going to move to approve the purchase of the 14 MDCs from the authorized vendor under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchase Program, Contract Number 012-073, at a total cost of $61,967.38 per their quote dated August 7th, 2024. Second. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next thing is consider purchase of fuel through 2024 to 2025 Montgomery County Consortium Fuel Contract. Greg Reeve, Public Works Director.
Good evening. The township has the opportunity to purchase petroleum products from the Montgomery County Fuel Consortium Fuel Contract. Contract has been awarded to Pilot Thomas Logistics. The contract is valid for one year and will run from September 1st to August 31st of 2025. Allocations for fuel for all departments were included in the 2024 approved final budget. It is recommended that the board authorize the township's partic, yeah, participation in the Montgomery County Consortium Fuel Contract awarded to Pilot Thomas Logistics for the purchase of petroleum products.
Is that the same pilot that we see like on the turnpike and stuff, like gas stations?
I believe so, but I'm not 100% sure on that one.
Okay. Any questions? Motion to approve the township's participation in the Montgomery County Consortium Fuel Contract awarded to Pilot Thomas Logistics for the purchase of petroleum products for a period of one year, ending on August 31st, 2025. Second. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 14, ratification of emergency replacement of traffic signal controller cabinet at Route 309 and Nap Road. Greg Reeve.
Sounds like that was fun.
Yes. Yes, it was. Um, as a part of the Westrum Project, the Luxor Apartments, Armor &amp; Sons Electric Incorporated was contracted to install battery backup, emergency preemption, and pedestrian crossings to the traffic signal at Route 309 and Nap Road. While in progress of the upgrades, Armor &amp; Sons Electric determined that due to the age and condition of the controller cabinet and its components, there is no way for them to make the necessary upgrades to the cabinet and ensure proper operation of the signal. Armor &amp; Sons Incorporated and Signal Control Products advised the controller cabinet needs immediate replacement to avoid dangerous malfunctions of the signal. Emergency approval was given to proceed with the purchase and installation of the replacement traffic signal controller cabinet at a total cost of $31,168. This project is being paid for out of the Capital Reserve Fund. So it would be our recommendation that the Board of Supervisors ratify the purchase and installation of the replacement of the traffic signal controller cabinet for 309 and Nap at a total cost of $31,168.
Do we know how old the cabinet was that is in such terrible condition?
That one was at least 28 years old.
Oh, wow.
26 to 28 years old.
Is that a good life for it?
We were told anywhere from 20 to 25 is a normal life expectancy of that.
We, we did okay.
I, it, yes, it, it served its useful life. I will, I will put it that way.
Okay, that's great. I didn't want to hear that it was like four years old and, okay.
No, and that one had modifications made to it over the years, so.
All right. I'm going to move to ratify the purchase and installation of a replacement traffic signal controller cabinet for Route 309 and Nap Road at a total cost of $31,168. Second. Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next item, number 15, under Parks and Rec, approve 2024 Fall Recreation Programs and Fees Schedule. I'm guessing that's going to Floyd.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, before you, as a proposed lineup of activities for the Montgomery Township Community and Recreation Center for fall of 2024, the recommended fees and charges for each program and event are also included. Schedule will be valid from September 3rd till December 31st, 2024. All, all CRC activities and events will be promoted through our normal publicity channels as well as social media. The diverse lineup of activities, programs, and special events provides a, a menu of recreational opportunities for all. A wider range of healthy fitness sessions, fun community special events, and positive educational programs will be available for individuals of all ages and abilities within the Montgomery Township area. Previous board action has always been approval of fees and charges for the, on a quarterly seasonal basis. Budget impact, the recreation opportunities are expected to be budget neutral. Our recommendation is to approve the 2024 Recreation Program and Fees Schedule Amendment as submitted. And if I may say a couple of things that, um, this thing gets pages longer each day. This thing gets pages longer each day, each time, which is a good thing, but. We have, we're we're going to do intergenerational fitness again, pizza making, self-defense for all ages, a walking group, which is something that a lot of community centers have. A little more organized walking because of all the trails we have and as well as line dancing.
I saw the line dancing. I was, I was about to comment on that. Is that the first time we're offering that? Because I don't remember seeing it before.
In in this center, yes, it's the first time being offered. It's, I've seen it in other, many other places, but yes.
So I had a question on that because I'm actually working with a couple. That's.
I know that.
The ones doing this. So I believe it's going to be on Mondays. I didn't see.
It is Mondays. It is going to be Mondays. All the publicity will start going out tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so the fact that you don't see it on here.
But yes, it's already set. He, we're, we're all set.
Okay, so just the fact that we don't see it on here doesn't matter. It'll say Monday somewhere. Okay.
And the other thing that left out of me was free bocce ball lessons. We're doing, that's what it says.
Bocce ball lessons? Okay.
Yeah.
I might have missed it.
Well, maybe it says free, well, it says free bocce. I, oh, it says open play. It's under open play, it's not lessons.
Yeah, we, 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 our courts are used specifically by people from the Chamney Falls on Friday evenings right now, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's okay.
I misread it.
He was hoping.
Yeah, actually, yes. I would love lessons. I I, you know, would love if we offered that because I, you know, that's just something I.
I'm sure we can put something together. We have a pretty qualified staff.
Consider that my recommendation.
All right. I'm going to move to approve the twenty twenty four Fall Recreation Programs and Fee Schedule as presented.
Second.
Any public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number sixteen, Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendment to the Municipal Waste Collection and Recycling Ordinance. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Thank you. We saved the most exciting part for last, of course.
Are you listening? Here it comes.
That's total sarcasm. The township is one of eleven municipalities that are members of the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission. This commission was established to implement the Municipal Waste Planning, Recycling, and Waste Reduction Act of nineteen eighty eight. Supervisor Beth Staub is our representative on that commission. We received correspondence from the NM CRC Solicitor advising us of changes that are being recommended by the commissioners of the NM CRC. The recommended changes are incorporated into a new ordinance, which the commission is requesting each member municipality adopt, and details were included in your packet. Additionally, the commission has recently contracted with HUPP Associates as its recycling grant coordinator. We are anticipating a larger grant because of the method they'll use to calculate the commercial and residential tonnage. I can attest to their skills in this. The community I was in previously. They put us in a group with two other municipalities, and as a result of that, our grant money went up every year, so. We're very pleased that they were able to take the commission on as another client. So we are recommending that the board authorize the advertisement of the proposed ordinance based on the recommendation of the NM CRC Solicitor. And our solicitor has had an opportunity to look at it as well.
Does this change anything about the way our residents need to recycle?
No, it does not. We still have to be in compliance with state law, so we don't, no, this just changes the internal workings of the commission and how they're going to use this new calculation method.
Okay.
And for consistency, we always want to make sure that everybody just does a blanket ordinance at the same time or within a reasonable amount of time. So that we don't have some who are working off the original ordinance, which established all the rules and everything. This is the newest version, and everybody's been asked to adopt it.
Everybody good? You good out there, Mr. Klein, with the trash and recycling? Okay. I'm going to move to authorize the advertisement of the proposed amendment to the Municipal Waste and Recycling Ordinance.
Second.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any old business to speak of? Anybody have any new business to speak of? All right, I'm going to remind everyone to try to come out to National Night Out Part Two on August twentieth. Lots of fun. You guys keep. Communicating. Thanks for coming tonight, and we will, I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.